Okay, we're back from executive session. I apologize for being a few minutes late in executive session. We had a couple of matters to attend to. Mr. Mahmood, can you do a roll call, please?
Surely. Ms. Boguszewski?
Here.
Ms. Antifonte? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Here.
Mr. Heel?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board members, we had some correspondence as listed on your agenda, and I'd like to turn over the meeting to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's so wonderful to see so many students, as well as adults, out tonight as part of our continuing effort to spotlight the great things that are going on throughout our district. Tonight, we have with us some students from Amsterdam Elementary School. They're going to share some really interesting and wonderful things that they're doing over there. And to start us off, I'd like to introduce and please welcome to the podium the principal of Amsterdam School, Dr. Maryam Aladee.
I'd like to thank the board and the community for giving us this opportunity. This year at Amsterdam School, one of our goals was to enhance technology by making global connections. And this evening, our students are going to share with you some great projects and some collaborative work they did using technology. I'd like to introduce the team that brought this evening together. We have two classroom teachers with us, Ms. Shabazian, grade four, and Mrs. Frender, grade two. And I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Barahas, our media specialist, and Mrs. Roy Akers, our computer specialist.
Thank you so much for having our students come in tonight. They're very excited to speak with you about all the exciting things we've done this year. As they get ready, I'll introduce them, and they'll come up and read to you what's been going on this year.
Good evening. The students and staff of Amsterdam Elementary School have been making many strides integrating technology this year, especially with the addition of Chromebooks for the third and fourth grade students. The students have been meeting and exceeding the district technology goals. And tonight, we have our students sharing just a small sample of the activities happening at Amsterdam Elementary School showcasing the technology. Thank you for having us.
The first class that's going to be presenting is from Mrs. Frender's class. We have some pictures behind you two as we go along if you'd like to take a look at what some of them are doing. We have Zarna Kalara and Atherv Gupta.
Recently, the second grade classes had the special opportunity to connect with an expert from the Buffalo Zoo in Buffalo, New York. Our expert Rebecca took us on an adventure around the world where we learned about different animals and their habitats.
We also learned about adaptations that enable animals to survive in extreme environments. It was so much fun seeing the animals live and learning about their special features. It felt like we were at the zoo ourselves.
The next trip we're taking is for World Read Aloud Day, a day where every grade got to Skype with a different author and learn about their readings and their writings and their accomplishments. We have Andrea Harding, Emily Sudal, Caitlin Greenstreet, and Leah Lavalva.
On February 16th, Amsterdam School celebrated World Read Aloud Day. The second grade had a Skype session with Anika M. Reecey, the author of the Anna Banana series. Before we Skyped with her, each class read a different book from her series. It was really fun talking to her.
We learned she was working on a new book with a new character, and we got to see her dog. After the Skype session, we wrote and sent her thank you notes. She sent us back autographed bookmarks. It was a great time.
On World Read Aloud Day, Ms. Holman's class used Google Hangouts to connect with another second grade class in Hartwell, Georgia. Each student got the chance to read a page from the Pigeon books by Mo Ellums. After we read our book, the other class read a book from the same Pigeon series.
It was great having the chance to talk about the stories afterwards and interesting to know what the other second graders loved these books, too. We also found that they have two recesses each day. They are so lucky.
We have fourth graders from Mrs. Shabazian's class, Stuthi Vidala Vanilla Kopali and Maata Atajin.
Hour of Code is a global movement reaching students all over the world. Ms. Roy Akers came into the fourth grade classes and talked about what coding is and coding-related careers. Then we had a chance to try out coding ourselves on the code.org site with an activity she set up for us. We also had the information so we could continue to do more on our own.
After learning about coding and experiencing it ourselves, we then taught students in the third grade all about coding and helped them learn how to code, too. It felt good to be the expert and share our knowledge.
Our class did nonfiction topics on weather. Each of us chose a different storm-type of weather to research. On our weather topic, we researched the characteristics of the storm/weather, dangers, safety tips, and fun facts. We also included a glossary, bolded words, and pictures. SmoR is a website that lets you create digital flyers or newsletters. Our class created a digital newsletter on our weather topic to inform the reader on different types of weather/storms.
Our last students are from Mrs. Kurtz's class, Maggie Kamaski, Eileen Maya Cinca, sorry, no glasses, Eliana Carrero, and Athie Gounder.
This year, the fourth grade got to Skype with two different authors. On World Read Aloud Day, we Skyped with Karen Romano Young. Before this event, we wrote Doodlebug stories based on her book, Doodlebug. During our session, she showed us her workroom where she had illustrations, supplies, and big copies of her books. We got to share some of our stories with her, and she was very impressed. She wanted to read them all, so Mrs. Barahas mailed them to her.
On November 2nd, the fourth grade classes Skyped with the author of the popular Stick Dog series. Before our Skype session, we researched different types of dogs during our library's special time. Each student picked a dog breed and drew it in stick form, just like Tom Watson.
On the day we Skyped, we all went to the library and used our big screen. Mr. Watson taught us how to draw the characters from his series. We found out that Tom Watson would be coming all the way from Chicago to visit our school. We were so excited.
Tom Watson's visit was so exciting. It was amazing to see someone we Skyped with in person. He talked about his new series, Stick Cat, and another book he was writing for Stick Dog. He showed us how to draw new characters and how to create scenes with them. He autographed every single student's drawings in the whole school. We had a great time.
On Martin Luther King Junior Day, Mr. Leon's fourth grade class went on a virtual worldwide party with Discovery Education. Later on that day, they went on Twitter where they got to tweet their reactions to the video with other kids around the world.
And that's just a couple of the exciting adventures that Amsterdam has been on this year so far.
I'd like to thank Dr. Aladee, all of her staff, as well as all the students who did such a tremendous job. Aren't they very articulate, a very interesting way of integrating technology? Congratulations. Now, we're going to take a little break in a few minutes, and I invite our students and our parents just to wait for a few minutes, and then we'll break, and we actually have some treats, and our board can actually meet you and thank you for coming on down tonight. But I have a very, very special announcement to make this evening. Every year, the New Jersey Association of School Counselors chooses a counselor of the year to represent the very best of counseling in the state of New Jersey. And I want to read to you some of the criteria that is used to determine who is the finest New Jersey counselor of the year for 2017. This person has to implement a comprehensive, data-driven school counseling program, has to demonstrate leadership and collaboration, demonstrates continued professional development, represent the school counseling in a professional manner, and maintain the highest standards of personal and professional conduct. And it is with great honor and privilege that I announce that New Jersey's 2017 School Counselor of the Year is the Aris School Counselor, Mrs. Angela Cleveland. Angela, if you wouldn't mind waking your way close to the podium. We actually have some people that are going to speak on your behalf, so I invite to the podium before Ms. Cleveland gives a few words of herself, our principal of Aris Elementary, Aris Intermediate School, Mr. Chris Carey, as well as the director of our district counseling program, Ms. Jessica Smedley.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. For those who are going to provide some comments this evening, I would ask you also to join us at this time. Come on up. We're going to, once again, how about a nice round of applause for Mrs. Cleveland? We have some flowers and balloons for you as well. And we're going to be a little while, Angela, so you just get comfortable standing there, okay? We appreciate it. Before I begin, I'm going to just take a moment, but I do want to acknowledge Angela has some of her family here this evening, so I want to make sure we acknowledge them. She has her husband Scott, just wave your hand, Scott, her mom Joanne, her brother Mark, her sister-in-law Jessica, and her niece and nephew Millie and Eli. Where are they? Everybody wave your hand there. Great. I also want to acknowledge Angela knows this, but I want to make sure everybody knows we have such a wonderful outpouring of support from teachers from Autun Road. If you're one of the teachers from Autun Road in support of Angela this evening, please just wave your hand. Fantastic. Thank you so much, everybody. As I said, I'm just going to spend a brief moment, then again, we have some people who want to say a few words about Angela. But last year, this started for us last year, we had the opportunity to acknowledge that Angela was named the Somerset County Counselor of the Year, and that was a wonderful accomplishment in itself. And of just last week, late last week, we found out that she received the honor for the state counselor of the year. And then this past Friday, we were able to celebrate as a family at Autun Road, coming together. Dr. Schiff came to visit the school. We had some nice words, and we shared some cake with Angela as well. So it's been a wonderful weekend of festivities, I'm sure, for Angela. But I wanted to highlight a few things that, you know, obviously you may not know. Angela has been with Autun Road for 10 years, since 2007. During that time, she has worked with thousands of students, fifth and sixth graders. She currently serves as our school's anti-bullying specialist, and over the years, she's also filled the role as the co-chair for the Borough Safe Committee, that's for a district committee, as well as she's the chairperson for the school's climate and safety team. I also wanted to mention that Angela has quite a resume when it comes in terms of her education. I feel it's important to share this. She has a bachelor's degree and three master's degrees, so I'll just briefly stay with me on this. Her bachelor's degree is from William Patterson University, and she has that in English Education and in Honors in Humanities, and then she went back later on also to get her Director of Guidance certificate. And her three master's degrees, she has one from the College of New Jersey in Instruction, another from Rider University in Organizational Leadership, and finally, from the University of Pennsylvania in Psychological Services. And she also has earned her, at University of Pennsylvania, her school counseling certificate. I also wanted to mention that over the years, Angela also received an outstanding counselor award from Mercer County Community College. And way back in 2002, even before Autun Road, she received the Unsung Hero Award from Carrier Clinic. So we are thrilled to have Angela represent not only Autun Road, but Somerset County, but the state, and that's a fantastic accomplishment. So I'm going to now pass it off to the district director of guidance, Ms. Jessica Smedley. She's going to say a few words. And then again, we have a few staff members, a parent, and one of our students are going to share, and well, one of her colleagues in the district as well. So I'm going to introduce, how about a round of applause for Ms. Jessica Smedley?
Thank you. It's my pleasure to honor and speak about Ms. Cleveland tonight. So in addition to being a great school counselor and being as busy as Mr. Carey already mentioned, Mrs. Cleveland is busy with a lot of outside activities. She is the co-founder of a website, Reigning It, which is designed to create an inclusive dialogue about STEM for women. Through her work with the website, Mrs. Cleveland is able to pursue her passion of providing a platform for women to share experiences in computer science and advocate for closing the gender gap in STEM careers. Similarly, Mrs. Cleveland works as a consultant for the National Center for Women and Information Technology in their Counselors for Computing Initiative. Mrs. Cleveland hopes to train school counselors on how to encourage more female students to pursue education and for and enter the STEM fields. Mrs. Cleveland is also very active in various professional organizations, most recently serving on the executive board for the New Jersey School Counselors Association. Mrs. Cleveland is also the author of three children's books, including one recently published in January entitled, The Fruit Flies: Can You Spot the Clues to How These Fruits Feel? Congratulations to Mrs. Cleveland. And I would like to introduce Mrs. Valerie Newman, the school nurse at Autun Road Intermediate School.
Thank you. I'm going to read this, okay, for you, but I just wanted to say, I am pleased to recognize Mrs. Angela Cleveland as the 2017 New Jersey School Counselor of the Year. I have worked with Mrs. Cleveland since September of 2007. She is highly knowledgeable in her fields and passionately dedicated to the students and staff at Autun Road. She is well-respected within the community and a pleasure to work with. She exemplifies the qualities of a dynamic leader by creating a nurturing, caring, and engaging learning environment for students and coworkers. As the school nurse, I have specific concerns for students' medical needs. Throughout those situations, Mrs. Cleveland has always had the time to listen to me and to help me find solutions that would work to meet the needs of the students and staff. She possesses the ability to come up with creative solutions quickly when others feel overwhelmed. Her quick wit also helps to break the tension and put a smile on your face just at the right time. Mrs. Cleveland's enthusiasm, dedication, and tireless efforts inspire the students, staff, and community. She connects with her colleagues on a personal level. Since she has developed meaningful relationships with us, we know we can go to her with a problem. She has earned the trust, respect, and loyalty of her peers. She leads by example when finding and implementing new ideas, activities, and programs that foster independence and healthy choices for students. For example, Mrs. Cleveland invited local celebrity Produce Pete to come to Autun Road and to speak to students about healthy food choices. Ate Autun Road, along with photos of students with Produce Pete, were featured on NBC's Saturday Today Show. Mrs. Cleveland has published therapeutic children's books, The Fruit Flies: Can You Spot the Clues to How These Fruits Feel? This is a book about helping students understand their emotions and spot clues to how others feelings. I'm no scaredy cat, but I'm afraid to go to school. This book is about generalized anxiety and school refusal. And one of my favorite, Peter's Special Concoctions, How a Little Boy Learned to Manage Type 1 Diabetes. This book was inspired by her nephew Eli's sudden diagnosis at the young age of five. As a school nurse, I appreciate the resources Mrs. Cleveland develops and shares with families, students, and educators. Mrs. Cleveland is passionate about social justice advocacy on the national level. In June of 2016, she was invited to the inaugural United States of Women's White House Summit. Speakers at the event included President Barack Obama, First Lady Michelle Obama, Vice President Joe Biden, and many other political leaders. Also in attendance were Oprah Winfrey, Amy Poehler, Kerry Washington, and many more. It was an incredible honor to have a Hillsborough representative at such an important event that brought guests from around the world together to talk about ways to affect real change in many arenas, including economic empowerment and access to education. Mrs. Cleveland is driven by a desire to empower students at Autun Road and create systemic change through advocacy for equitable access to educational opportunities, especially opportunities in computer science. Others find her to be an excellent role model who contributes to the local, state, and national community and encourages others to do the same. Regardless of our role in her life, we all see her spirit in her name. Angela is an angel and a loving helper to us all. Thank you.
If I hold this microphone, it's going to go flying. You know I talk with my hands. Okay. I'm sure you can hear me anyway, right, without me holding it? Hi, I'm Tyann Lyons. I am a teacher at Autun Road, and it was, don't laugh at me. It was 10 years ago when my former vice principal informed me that my fifth-grade team was assigned to work with the new school counselor hire, Mrs. Angela Cleveland. My immediate response was, oh, no, 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 no. I was in my 12th year at that point and starting a new program that came with a unique brand of challenges, and there was no way I was getting stuck with some inexperienced newbie. But my vice principal said, trust me. Well, I am so glad I listened to her because she was so right. I can't imagine a person more deserving of this recognition than Angela Cleveland. I joke with Angela that she's a woman who always needs a project, and it couldn't be more true. She's always juggling so many proverbial balls in the air, it's a wonder she doesn't hit herself in the head with some of them. But at the root of every one of her undertakings, whether it's a club or chairing a committee, the motive is the same: to make people feel empowered by their choices. Angela has an innate gift of connecting with people and making them feel at ease, not only with her, but with themselves. Though I have witnessed this so many times over the years, one particular child comes to mind. This young man was adopted from Korea and felt a cultural disconnect. After talking with him, Angela identified his struggle and shared with him her own Korean roots and things she had done to reconnect with her heritage. Just knowing that someone could feel the way he did empowered this student and his family. Angela worked with the entire family to find the balance that they needed. Angela is so dedicated, she doesn't just service her assigned students. This school year, we have a student who is starting to come out of his shell, and I noticed that some of his proudest social interactions are done using puns. So of course, even though she is not our team counselor this year, Angela agreed to partake in the first-ever Team 5J pun-off with this student. For those who have never seen a pun-off, basically, a topic is given, and the contestants just trade puns on the subject until they run out. I was a little nervous for my student because Angela's pretty quick with her puns. The contest started out competitive, but in the end, she got trounced by the pun master. And she didn't even throw the contest to let him win. What a wonderful example of student empowerment. I had to work on that one. He had to help me with that, actually, my student. Angela's influence is more far-reaching, though. She runs workshops for the New Jersey School Counselors Association, is webmaster of their website, and is a certified Google Apps in Education presenter. Angela has penned numerous articles featured in state and national publications and has self-published children's books on topics, like we said, identifying emotional cues and school anxiety. Of course, any students who know they have a counselor like Mrs. Cleveland looking out for them will find their anxiety melting away with her calming office sandbox art, her squishy stress balls, and her energy-releasing fidget toys. She promotes an atmosphere where her students feel comfortable, cared for, and connected. Angela is also sought after nationwide as a technology-in-school counseling presenter. That's because she co-founded a successful blog and website to create a dialogue for women in STEM called Reigning It. I love when she comes back all flustered from these presentations because some of the women treat her like she's a celebrity. It's you! You're the creator of Reigning It! Angela's a doer, but the attention she gets for it makes her squirm a little bit, like right now. Watch, she does. However, it's all worth it because for every project, every presentation, every article or blog post, she brings her connections and what she learned back home to Aris. She finds some kind of new and innovative way to use it for the benefit of her students, to empower the children of Hillsborough. Angela is a person who lives outside the lines, not because she can't stay within the lines, but because she knows there's a bigger picture she can make even more beautiful by coloring outside of them. Angela, it's been a privilege to work beside you for these past 10 years, and an even bigger honor to call you my good friend. You're an inspiration to many, including me, every day. I love you, and you so deserve this. Congratulations.
My name is Jane Calagieri, and I am honored to be here tonight to speak on Mrs. Cleveland's behalf. I work in the district, but tonight I stand here as an appreciative parent. My daughter Gracie is a sixth grader here at Aris, and I couldn't be happier with their teachers the past two years. They have all been truly amazing and supportive, but Angela Cleveland came into our lives this year when we needed her the most. The first day of school is stressful for most children. They worry about where their classes are, opening their locker, or even what outfit they will wear. Sadly, Gracie's school year started off very differently. On August 29th, 2016, I received a frantic call from my sister that my 13-year-old nephew was struck by a car while riding his bicycle with his brother. We all rushed to the hospital to spend our last hours with our beloved Andrew. An 11-year-old should not have to watch her cousin, who she loved like a brother, pass away. Death is hard enough to accept as an adult, but as a child, nothing about it made sense. School was starting just a few days after Andrew's funeral, and I honestly didn't know how I'd be able to send Gracie to school in the state of mind that she was in. After reaching out for advice from several of my friends, it was suggested to contact Gracie's counselor. I was a bit hesitant at first because Gracie didn't know Mrs. Cleveland. I wasn't sure if she would be comfortable speaking to someone she didn't know on a topic so painful and personal. The day before Hillsborough teachers were to report to their first day of school, I decided to reach out via email. Not only did she respond promptly to my email, but she offered to have Gracie and me come into school to meet with her. She sacrificed her time on her first day when things are generally hectic and there is much to do. When we arrived, she greeted us with a smile and a hug. She brought us into her office so we could speak privately. I was immediately impressed with her soft and sympathetic demeanor. Mrs. Cleveland was patient with both Gracie and myself, as this was an extremely emotional time. After conversing and giving us her full attention, Mrs. Cleveland was kind enough to show Gracie where her locker would be and all of her classes. She didn't have to, but she could tell that this was something that was causing Gracie some anxiety. I loved how intuitive she was with my daughter. She had an amazing gift. When Gracie and I got to the car, she turned to me and said, Mom, I think I can do this. I was so grateful. Within minutes, she had already developed a rapport with Gracie, and for that, my husband and I felt comfortable sending her to school. We knew Gracie had a confidant if needed. As the school year went on, Mrs. Cleveland continued to be there for her. Whether it was just to pop in and say hi or a scheduled visit, she always gave Gracie 100%. Some mornings, I knew, just by how Gracie woke up, that she may need just a little extra TLC that day. I would send an email with a heads-up, not a great morning, and she made sure to check in on her, and if she wasn't available, she would make a point to enlist the help of Gracie's teachers. They all worked together to ensure Gracie had a good year. As we head into our third marking period, I can proudly say that our daughter has had straight A's thus far. Again, if it wasn't for Mrs. Cleveland helping Gracie with coping skills for grief and her constant support, I truly believe her report card and disposition wouldn't have reflected -- would have reflected differently. Our family will be forever grateful for her kindness, knowledge, and beautiful heart. And New Jersey got it right when they picked Angela Cleveland as School Counselor of the Year. And my daughter would like to also speak.
Wow, where do I even start? Mrs. Cleveland has done so much for my family and me. Not only has she helped me deal with the pain of losing my cousin, but she has also helped hundreds of other kids with their pain as well, as well, and that's truly amazing. What surprises me the most is how she's willing to sit there and deal with all I have to say in my crazy life. She, she gave me strategies on how to deal with my grief, which I still use today. Not only has she begun, not only has she been a great school counselor, she has also been an amazing friend. Here is an example. She made this group called Aris Orientation Group to help kids who had just moved from Hillsborough or have just started going to this school from a different state or town. She gives them a tour of the school to help them learn their way around. She also shows them how to use their Chromebook and so much more. I had heard about it from my friends, so I said, "Let's do it." So, we did it, and it was honestly so much fun. We did so many fun activities, and it was an amazing experience. I met so many of my friends there, too. Overall, Ms. Cleveland is absolutely amazing, and she deserved to win the School Counselor of the Year.
My name is Beth Moran, and I'm a school counselor at the high school. And what I'd like to talk about is a couple of the balls that Angela keeps in the air and how she collaborates. So, Mrs. Cleveland and I, first of all, it's really a pleasure and an honor to, to work with Mrs. Cleveland. And a couple of years ago, we had an idea of collaborating between the high school and Aris by having the Pride, an anti-bullying club at the high school, come to Aris and give a, a class to all the 5th graders. And what the lessons they talk about are anti-cyberbullying and digital citizenship. Another favorite project of mine that Angela and I worked on together is, we had, Angela's involved in parent education, and she had the brilliant idea, and maybe you get the sense how creative Angela is, to have students do the education. So, we presented an evening's program to teach parents about social media and all the apps that the young people are using that maybe the parents don't know about. And Angela's idea was to have the adults create the structure of the evening and have the students run it. So, once again, the Pride students came, made presentations on the applications, and then ran a whole, a small group interactive session with all the parents. And it really was quite, quite an evening. So, those are just two, two examples, two of my favorite examples of, of working with Angela. So, please join me once again in acknowledging Mrs. Angela Cleveland.
And finally, on behalf of the Board of Education, we have a small token of appreciation that we'd like to give to you.
So, the board has a plaque for you, as you can see, I'm going to read it. "In recognition of Angela Cleveland, Auton Road Intermediate School for being selected as the NJSCA 2017 State of New Jersey School Counselor of the Year, presented by the Hillsborough Township Board of Education, April 2017." Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Angela.
Thank you.
I am so honored to be here tonight. I am filled with such gratitude for the words shared by so many of you. Thank you so much to the staff and the students who spoke. You might not know this, but a lot of them are a little bit nervous about public speaking, so I know this took a lot of courage, and I appreciate that, especially from Gracie. Thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to serve the students and staff in Hillsborough. And a special thank you to Dr. Schiff and Dr. Intunis, and the other administrators in my life, Ms. Medley, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Batista, and Mr. Jensen. They offer great encouragement and leadership, and I would like to share a favorite quote of mine about leadership. It's from a famous author, maybe you have heard of this author, it's called Anonymous. Leaders instill in their people a hope for success and a belief in themselves. Positive leaders empower people to accomplish their goals. That is the type of leadership that is fostered here in Hillsborough, and I am so grateful to have these role models in my life. So, thank you to you. To my Hillsborough family, to the amazing staff here at Auton Road and Hillsborough Township Public Schools. There are so many wonderful things about this staff that I, I want to share with the Board of Ed while I have the microphone. This is the most dedicated and compassionate staff that I have ever worked with. These are people who come together in an instant. I have so many examples, I'm just going to share with you an example from the past week, when it came to my attention that there was a family in town who was in need of food, clothing for their children, bedding, household items like dishes, things like that. And I reached out to some of our staff members, and I immediately was able to get those supplies and get them in the hands of that family. Our staff came together donating things from their own homes and making purchases as well. It's just amazing to see everyone come together and support each other as a family in this community. And it doesn't just end with this, you know, this staff here. When people retire, they still come back. Our staff still comes back and donates. As an example, there is a teacher who, several years ago, tragically lost her son in a car accident, and every December, she comes back and she gives me gift cards that I can donate to families in need in honor of her son. Now, I have the honor to give these items to families and to students in need, but I don't deserve the credit. This staff, these are the people who come together, and they help me put the resources in the hands of families. So, I would like to give them a round of applause, please. A special thank you to my family who is here tonight, my mom, my brother and sister-in-law, my niece and nephew. I come from a family of chefs. My brother and sister-in-law have their own catering business called Silver Birch Kitchens. I'm sure Mr. Carey knows that I did not get the culinary arch gene when I overcooked my lunch earlier this week. So, I get great, great family meals, but I'm not the chef. And to my husband who is here tonight, who supports my many endeavors and time-consuming projects, he never tires of hearing me talk about school, outside projects, and more, or else he just does a really good job pretending to listen to me. So, thank you to Scott. And lastly, I just want to say, not many people know really what school counselors do. They may remember some of their experiences in school, and it's, I feel like it's so different today. So, I pulled out one sentence from the American School Counselor Association Code of Ethics that is a pretty weighty sentence that covers a lot of what we do. "School counselors are advocates, leaders, collaborators, and consultants who create systemic change by providing equitable educational access and success by connecting their school counseling programs to the district's mission and improvement plans." I love that quote, and it's a lot. So, I just want to, you know, give an example from what Beth Moran said earlier. What we do as counselors is we'll look at trends in the district, and we may notice that there are students struggling and parents struggling to understand certain social media apps, or there may be some other challenge that we're facing. We collect the data, and then we work to make individual differences within our students and to create systemic change. So, the programs that Beth Moran was talking about was a collaboration from Aris up through the high school involving key stakeholders, our staff and our students, to address some of the challenges that we were facing in our community with social media. So, lastly, I'd just like to end with a quote from Michelle Obama, who dedicated her final speech as First Lady to school counselors. What an honor! She said, "No matter where students are from, how much money their parents have, no matter what they look like, or who they love, or how they worship, or what language they speak at home, they have a place in this country." And she used the word "country," and I just want to expand on that. As school counselors, we make sure that our students have a place in our schools, in our district, in our community, in our state, in our country, in our world. We make sure that everybody feels included. Being a school counselor is a huge responsibility and a great honor. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve the staff and students at Hillsborough Township Public Schools.
We're going to take a little break right now. We do have a small reception, some cake for anyone that's interested, as well as some of the kids. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Congratulations again.
We're, we're back in public session at this point. Mr. President, I have a few more pieces of great news that I'd like to share with the board and the community this evening.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Borough Safe is a local committee made up of district staff members concerned with community members that aims to educate individuals that suicide is preventable and resources are available. In line with that mission, the committee held a Sources of Strength Resource Fair for Hillsborough High School juniors and seniors on March 24th. The purpose of the fair was to make students aware that resources exist and that they may take advantage of it when they face, when they're faced with stressors in their life. I want to thank the members of Borough Safe, as well as the Sources of Strength students, for hosting the fair and helping to educate our students. The supports that they have are both inside as well as outside of school. Congratulations to Hillsborough High School senior Anna Liao, who is the recipient of a $1,000 scholarship from the Art Educators of New Jersey. Anna was nominated by her art teacher, Lynn Bood. Anna will be honored at the Governor's Award Ceremony, Award Ceremony on May 24th. Congratulations to Anna. Also, congratulations goes out to Hillsborough High School senior Ria Dudda, who recently joined students from around the world to participate in the Honeywell Leadership Challenge Academy at the U.S. Space and Rocket Center in Huntsville, Alabama. The academy is an annual scholarship program that aims to encourage excitement and engagement around STEM projects for students between the ages of 16 and 18. Program activities include building and testing rockets, simulated astronaut training, conducting shuttle missions, and simulating a moonwalk. What an amazing experience. Congratulations to Hillsborough High School sophomore Shridhar Partha Sarathy. Excuse me. Shridhar has been awarded an all-expenses-paid summer study trip to Germany by the American Association of Teachers of German. He was selected as a national non-senior winner after scoring in the 99th percentile on a Level 3 National German Exam for high school students. Shrihar is one of 44 outstanding German students selected from across the U.S. to receive this award. Congratulations, Shridhar. Yep, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. We'll go on to approval of minutes. We have two separate minutes in your packets, or your virtual packets online. So, we'll start with the March 13th, 2017 Public Minutes. May I have a motion, please?
No, move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Yeah, got it.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And the March 20th, 2017 Public Minutes.
No move? No.
Second? Okay.
Second, Cooper.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain. Motion passes.
All right, thank you. I do not believe that committees met. We're meeting, all committees are meeting this week, so we'll have committee reports at the next board meeting. We're up to the public portion of the meeting for public comment. The first part will be public comment on the 2017-2018 budget. As you know, a few weeks ago, we passed the tentative budget. Committees will meet this week to discuss possible changes to what we allocated in the tentative budget. The final budget's going to be approved, the first Monday in May?
May, yes.
Our first Monday in May at the board meeting?
May 8.
May 8, second Monday in May, actually. Sorry about that. So, this is for public input on the 2017-18 budget specifically. Okay. I'll also say that when public comes up to comment, we typically don't address questions or comments. Tonight, we refer those questions or comments to proper, the appropriate board committee or administration for further review. We also do not discuss personnel matters by New Jersey state law at, into the public comment section for confidentiality. All right. Public input on tonight's action agenda. Specifically, and I am sorry, on the action agenda? Okay. Is that, we just go, is that all that we do? Or is it, or new business?
Actually, we're doing, we can do a little bit of both. We can do.
Don't we usually do, or new business?
We can do both.
Okay, or, or new business. I'm sorry, I usually says it here.
Yeah, we can do both.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so this would be, yeah. I was, I was trying to figure out where you guys come up. Now, it was, I was looking for the word "new business," I didn't see it. Who wrote this?
Teresa? Maybe.
All right. Please state your name and affiliation.
So, my name is Chris Rothman, and I am the current student leader of FRC Team 75, the Hillsborough High School Robotics Team.
My name's Marissa Krillman. I'm on the mechanical sub-team of the robotics team, and I'm currently in pit crew.
Very good.
It's funny, I was looking for "new business" too. Couldn't really find it. But, so anyway, I would just like to thank those that came to our warehouse showcase last Saturday, Mrs. Trugilo, and also those who came to our competition over the weekend at Montgomery. We really, really appreciate your support as we represent Hillsborough High School in First Robotics. So, with that, we'd like to give a little overview of how we did through our season so far. So, a few weeks ago, we competed in Mount Olive, and we became robot finalists, and we won the Engineering Inspiration Award, which are two of the highest honors you can win in a robotics competition. We also had one of our lead mentors, Dave Blackburn, who is also a certified advisor, win the Woody Flowers Award, and he will be competing at MAR this week to win Woody Flowers again and possibly compete internationally. This past weekend, we competed at Montgomery High School, where we became robot champions. But not only were we robot champions, we were actually captains of the championship alliance. We took home the gold, essentially. And then we also won the Industrial Design Award. And we also had one of our other mentors, Kevin Colenti, win the Don Bowers Inspiration Award for embodying the values of First Robotics, which is cooperation, leadership, and innovation. This is the first year this award has existed, and we're so thrilled that our mentor got to win it. In addition to that, we had one of our high school juniors, Diana Veronin, win the Dean's List Award. And she will be competing this week at Lehigh again for Dean's List. So, this is the second year that we've had a Team 75 Hillsborough High School member compete at MAR for Dean's List. So, with that, we'd like to thank you for your continuous support, and we would actually like to invite you, if you would like to come, to see us compete at Lehigh University at the Mid-Atlantic Region District Championships. The competition, it starts Wednesday for us, but the competition really starts Thursday, and it will go until Saturday. And then if we do well there, then we will be competing and representing Hillsborough High School on an international level, international level at St. Louis in about two to three weeks. And we're thrilled, we really hope that we can get there. 22 teams will be chosen at the Mid-Atlantic Region District Championship to compete internationally and represent the Mid-Atlantic region. And we, right now, we are ranked fifth in the entire region. So...
Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So, we are doing very, very well this year, and we'd like to thank you for your continuous support, and we're very, very gracious for it.
Thank you.
So, with that, we did have one quick question, though. We wanted to ask if there's any status regarding the varsity letter bill for academic teams.
I'm not actually sure where that is. I think it passed both houses and is awaiting the Governor's signature at this point, but I'm not sure.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. All right, Dr. Schiff, any new business from the board or other comment? Mrs. Haas?
I'll be next.
I'll be next.
There we go.
I just want to thank the robotics team's members for coming here today. I was involved with the robotics team 10 years ago, and I went to Montgomery to see them this weekend, and oh my God, there were so many people there who were there 10 years ago. And many of them have kids who have long graduated, and, you know, parents from our community continue to go there and to help the team. And, you know, there was an employee of Robert Woodjohn, of, sorry, of Johnson &amp; Johnson, who were there, who was there, who was recently a student of ours, and now he's working for Johnson &amp; Johnson. And he was there as a mentor and a representative of the company. And Dave Blackburn, for example, is somebody who was there when I was there, super guy, constantly in the pits and working with the kids. And I heard also that Carmine Rizzo, who has been doing this for over 10 years, was planning to retire this year. And he is just a wonderful, wonderful guy, and he will be missed so horribly. So I'd just like to publicly thank him for everything he's done for the team, because it's really made an impact, and, you know, we see it in all the displays. And by the way, this is like the most awesome game I have ever seen. I mean, back in the day, we were hanging like, you know, little triangles on a hook. These guys have to do like 10 different things in order to get points, and they're doing them. And it's just an incredible thing to watch, so if you have a chance, go.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Any other new business from the board? Okay, so I think we'll proceed to the action agenda. Oh. Oh, did you have another comment? I'm sorry.
We just wanted to thank you for saying that. We really, really appreciate it. And that, going off of the game this year, one of the things that we're really proud of is that in the beginning of the game, there's a 15-second autonomous period, and very, very scarcely in the entire world has it happened where you were able to place three gears on an airship and get them spinning in that 15-second period with absolutely no controls on your robot by having it completely off of programming. But we accomplished it this weekend as one of the few teams in the entire world that's done it. Thank you. And again, we would like to thank you for saying that and for everything that you guys have done to support us and our team.
Thank you very much. Dr. Schiff, the action agenda?
I was just gonna say, you haven't seen anything until you've seen a robot climb rope. And that's what our robot is doing this year, pretty remarkable things. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of education, to approve travel and related expenses, the, the HIB determination list, family science sessions, overnight field trips, policies and regulations for first reading as listed, out-of-district placements. Approve an additional out-of-district placement, as well as submit a grant application.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on education items?
Can we separate out 9.7?
Sure. 9.7, okay, we'll do 9.7 separately. Anybody else? Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, so let's have, roll call, Mr. Moot on, on everything, I'd just like to do it like this, everything except 9.7.
You got it. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, do we need another? No.
No, we, yeah, another motion with 9.7.
Oh, we do? Okay, so for 9.7, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second? Okay. Discussion on 9.7?
I thought we were gonna, 9.2?
This is, 9.2 is, is current.
Yeah, we're gonna get there.
The other one is a past one. Okay, so that's, it's valid. So we already approved it, so it's good. Discussion on 9.7? No? Okay, a roll call for 9.7, Mr. Moot.
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Abstained.
Okay. Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We do have an addendum to the agenda, one motion that is a walk-on from the, the Board's executive session work.
Were you gonna do that now, or under operations?
Yeah, we can do it now.
Okay.
And this will be item 9.9.
Oh, okay. All right, I got you, I got you. So, this is, shall I read what it is?
Yes, we'll read the motion into the record.
All right, so this is a motion to reverse the finding of HIB in the matter TRI 2016-002. This is to reverse the finding. So a yes vote will be to reverse the finding. Okay. Do I, hear a motion?
We can move in a second.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, a roll call.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources, to approve the retirement of Debbie Smolinka. Debbie has been a secretary in the athletic department with us since September of, of 2004, and we appreciate all of her service to the district and the athletic department. Also approve the revised leaves of absences, the revised long-term substitutes, revised student-teacher list, to rescind the co-curricular contract as listed, to approve the transfer and change in assignment as listed, to approve the revised leaves of absences, and the approval of appointments for teachers, long-term substitute, instructional assistant, co-curricular advisors, and substitutes as per attached, and to approve the school counseling internship as listed, to pre-approve extra-period coverage and the approval of extra-period coverage, as well as the approval of the 2017 summer enrichment staff, and the approval of science lab coverage for sixth period.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion for HR items? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve the monthly financials, item transfers, and to accept the donations. Equipment from Novartis Pharmaceutical, read, writable DVDs from Virginia Dunn, and from our nursing supervisor, Lorraine Borwick, an anatomical human skeleton life-size. And we thank them for their donations.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any, any discussion? Okay, no skeletons in Mrs. Borick's closet any longer. Don't know they'll be in our closet. This is nice. You like that one? You like that one? All right, you like? Yeah, it was funny. All right, roll call, Mr. Moot.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Even with that joke, yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Finally, I do have some informational items for the Board's consideration, including enrollment data, fire and crisis drill, suspension report, and the HIB review.
All right, thank you. We'll go to comments from the board public under the heading of "Old Business," but it could be, you know, whatever's on your mind.